Call to order, City of Forest Park County organizational meeting. December 2nd, 2019. Would the clerk please call the roll?
Herbie?
Here.
Holt?
Here.
Johnson?
Here.
Moore?
Here.
Ness?
Here.
The record show that five returning council members are all present. The second order of business would be the oath of office for the two newly elected council members and though the oath of office tonight, all of the oaths will be done by State Representative Jessica Miranda. The first oath would be for re-elected council member Denise Holt.
First of all, congratulations.
Thank you.
Alright, you ready?
I'm ready.
Okay, I state your name.
I, Denise Holt.
Do solemnly swear or affirm.
Do solemnly affirm.
That I will support.
That I will support.
The Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution.
And the Constitution.
Of the state of Ohio.
Of the state of Ohio.
The Charter of the City of Forest Park, Ohio.
The Charter of the City of Forest Park, Ohio.
And that I will faithfully.
That I will faithfully.
Honestly.
Honestly.
And impartially.
And impartially.
Discharge the duties as.
Discharge the duties as City Council Member, City of Forest Park.
Fantastic, congratulations.
Thank you.
The second person receiving the oath for council will be Mr. Aaron Brown.
Yeah, go ahead and play. Alright, you ready?
Yes.
Okay, I state your name.
I, Aaron Brown.
Do solemnly swear or affirm.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support.
That I will support.
The Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the state of Ohio.
And the Constitution of the state of Ohio.
The Charter of the City of Forest Park, Ohio.
The Charter of the City of Forest Park, Ohio.
And that I will faithfully.
And I will faithfully.
Honestly.
Honestly.
And impartially.
And impartially.
Discharge the duties as.
Discharge the duties as.
Forest Park Councilman.
Forest Park Councilman.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
The next person would be Mr. Reggie Sylvester.
Good evening, sir.
Good evening.
How are you?
I'm fine.
Alright, you ready?
I'm ready.
Alright, I state your name.
I, Reggie Sylvester.
Do solemnly swear or affirm.
Do solemnly swear or affirm.
That I will support.
That I will support.
The Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the state of Ohio.
And the Constitution of the state of Ohio.
The Charter of the City of Forest Park, Ohio.
Charter of the City of Forest Park, Ohio.
And that I will faithfully.
And I will faithfully.
Honestly.
Honestly.
And impartially.
And impartially.
Discharge the duties as.
Discharge the duties as.
Forest Park Councilman. Perfect, congratulations.
So, at this time, I would ask Councilman Brown and Councilman Sylvester to take your seats at the desk, please. The next item of business under organization would be appointments. The first one of those would be a resolution from Councilwoman Holt.
I would like to make a motion that a resolution that Sally D. Boyd, appointing Sally D. Boyd as Clerk of Council of the City of Forest Park and authorizing the city manager to enter into an agreement on behalf of the City of Forest Park.
Second.
It's been moved in second that we appoint Sally Boyd as Clerk of Council of the City of Forest Park and authorizing the city manager to enter into an agreement on behalf of the City of Forest Park, Ohio. Is there any discussion?
Just that this was posted six days prior to the meeting.
Any further discussion?
None.
Hearing none, is this a voice roll call?
Well, I need to read the title to the resolution.
Okay.
But there would just need to be a motion to suspend the rules and...
Okay. Sorry Sally, did you want a motion to suspend the rules?
Read by title only.
Okay. Is there a motion to suspend and read by title only, Councilwoman Herbie?
Yes, I would move to suspend the rules requiring the reading in full and read by title only, Resolution Number 44-2019.
Second.
It's been moved in second that we suspend the rules requiring the reading in full and read by title only, Resolution 44-2019. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, would the clerk please call the roll on the motion to suspend?
Brown?
Yes.
Yes.
Herbie?
Yes.
Holt?
Yes.
Johnson?
Yes.
Moore?
Yes.
Ness?
Yes.
Sylvester?
Motion to suspend the rules passes 7-0. So, at this time, is there any further discussion on the issue? Hearing none, is this roll call or...
I just need to read it by title only.
Okay, read it.
Resolution Number 44-2019, a resolution appointing Sally D. Boyd as Clerk of Council of the City of Forest Park and authorizing the city manager to enter into an agreement on behalf of the City of Forest Park, Ohio.
Is there, do we need another motion Sally?
No, just a...
Vote? Is it voice or...
A roll call.
Okay, would the clerk please call the roll on Resolution 44-2019?
Brown?
Yes.
Herbie?
Yes.
Holt?
Yes.
Johnson?
Yes.
Moore?
Yes.
Ness?
Yes.
Sylvester?
Yes.
The motion passes, Resolution 44-2019 passes 7-0. Next item on the agenda would be the oath of office for Clerk of Council. Ford, if you would, please.
Good evening, how are you?
Alright, ready?
Yes.
Okay, I state your name.
I, Sally Boyd.
Do solemnly swear or affirm.
Do solemnly affirm.
That I will support.
That I will support.
The Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the state of Ohio.
And the Constitution of the state of Ohio.
The Charter of the City of Forest Park, Ohio.
Charter of the City of Forest Park, Ohio.
And that I will faithfully.
And that I will faithfully.
Honestly.
Honestly.
And impartially.
And impartially.
Discharge the duties as.
Discharge the duties as Clerk of Council.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Next we'll move to item number four, election of officers. We have three officers for the councils, the mayor, the first vice mayor, and the second vice mayor. The process we will use would be, there will be open nominations. We will do each of these separately. There will be open nominations. Each nomination requires a second. After all of the nominations, we will hold a vote for each of the three individually, separately I should say, and after we had elected all three, then the oath of office will be administered to the three together. If you are nominated and you do not wish to serve in that office, you must at that point state that you do not wish to serve so that your name would not be included in the voting. Does everybody understand that? Okay, the first office would be, we're now open for nomination for the office of mayor. Councilwoman Holt?
I would like to nominate Charles Johnson as premier.
Second.
Any other nominations? Hearing none, the nomination would then be declared closed. We would, since there's only one candidate, we would then declare that this candidate is elected unanimously as mayor. One other thing I should mention to council, in the past, we have voted by writing the names of the nominee that we wanted to vote for. The law, we've been informed by our attorney that we're no longer allowed to do that, so in case that there's more than one nominee, when there is, when it's time to vote, we will vote by a show of hands and by charter. Every, no one is allowed to abstain from voting. You can abstain, but you have to give a reason, and it must be a reason that would be a valid reason, that is to say, I can't abstain and say, "I didn't vote because I don't like either one of these folks." It has to be a legitimate abstention, meaning that you are somehow, you know, it would be some conflict of interest for you to do so. Is that clear? Anybody got any question about that? Good, we would move then to item B, nomination for office of first vice mayor. The office is now open, floor is now open for nominations of office of first vice mayor. Councilwoman Herbie?
Yes, I would nominate Denise Holt for the office of first vice mayor.
Require a second?
A second.
Are there other nominations? Other nominations? Other nominations? Hearing no other nominations, there being one nominee, the chair would declare that Councilwoman Holt is elected as first vice mayor for the City of Forest Park. The next office is item C, nomination for office of second vice mayor. Is there any nominations? Councilwoman Holt?
I would like to nominate Rosalind Moore as second vice mayor.
Rosalind Moore's been nominated, is there a second?
Second.
A second.
Mr. Sylvester seconds. Is there any other nominations?
I would like to nominate myself as second vice mayor.
Councilwoman Chelsea Ness has been nominated, is there a second? Is there a second? Is there a second? I will, at this point, ask the clerk who also is our parliamentarian, if there is no second, is that nomination carried forth?
Generally, if there's no second, it ends there.
But at this point, we have discussion? Is that, is that fact according to Robert's rules?
After the nominations are closed, but we'll get into point of clarification first. According to the ruling by the parliamentarian, with the chair through the parliamentarian, there is no second, so that nomination could move, would then be moved forward. At this point, we would entertain in a discussion on the nomination. Councilwoman Ness?
Alright, well, good evenings, good to have all you guys out here, see how we do some things. So, I did nominate myself, and for good reason, at least in my own personal opinion, and I'd like to, of course, offer that information so that you, our residents and our families of our community can actually, you know, understand the reasoning as to why I feel that I should at least be nominated for a second vice president, or I'm sorry, second vice mayor. So, I am one of the vice chairs for the Economic Development Commission for the city and have been for almost three years now. It's gone very well, I dutifully fulfill my duties, and I'm very happy to announce that just in the past 60 days, I have launched a minority business community initiative that came, that was actually born out of several things that was being noticed on our commission in terms of how we are providing dollars, economic incentive to very large companies that are here in our city, and also kind of looking at the disparity in terms of what that ownership looks like from our companies, being that predominantly 90-plus percent are Caucasian owned, and we have over 70% minority or African-American residents in the city. So, trying to give them an opportunity and a way, a very clear path to either enhancing their businesses and/or starting it. I've got the help of our African-American Business Chamber, Mr. Eric Kearney, and so we were able to bring in something, someone from Hamilton County at our last meeting last month in order to get that process rolling, so you'll be seeing those things. And then when it comes to community work, I am the chair for the public safety. So, those, that committee looks at police and fire. Prior to my being council member, we hadn't had a meeting for four years with that committee, and so it was kind of high time that we had one. And when we did, some, you know, questions were asked and we were able to come up with an idea, and my idea was having old-fashioned block parties. Now, what that does is it allows your police to engage, I'm not saying that they're not, but it allows your police to engage with the community, allows your residents to get to know one another and help promote safety, safe neighborhoods. And I am happy to announce that I recruited Kathy Gray, she's one of our residents, she also sits on the Forest Park, Park and Rec, and she took off with it. We had a few meetings brainstorming and kind of strategizing that, and last, in the September, the end of September, on our street, the H section on Holderness, we hosted a huge block party. It was overwhelming success, we had over 300 individuals attend. I've also been the only council member to attend the First Suburbs Consortium meetings, not in three years because I've been here too, but those are very important meetings where we get to have a voice and we get to entertain and understand and ask questions at a countywide level as to what's happening broadly in economics, the movement, the shifts, and then I come and I report that information back to fellow council members. When it comes to the school district, I've supported them at their groundbreaking ceremony as well as multiple meetings that we've had community-wide where we're looking at the design and construction of these buildings and kind of what we need to look for and asking those questions from the engineers and things like that. Also, of course, in helping our students to come to school, the warrior clap, doing those things, the Hamilton County bus transportation, and one thing I'm most proud of is proposing the proclamation and seeing that through for Stephanie Dumas, which is our county's first and only ever female African-American commissioner, which is, you know, this is her hometown, and so I was very thankful and proud to have done that. There's, the list goes on, I attend many meetings, not just for the city of, I'm sorry, not just for the chairs, the committees that I sit on, but also others as well, because you want to try to get an understanding of what's going on in a broad way. And I know I'm long-winded, but lastly, I'll close with this. We did have a city manager search. It was unsuccessful unfortunately, and so we had, you know, Mr. Ray Hod just had to just stay on for another year while we got it right, and so I was very thankful. First vice mayor, our former first vice mayor and councilman, who's no longer with us, Wendell Burns, he and myself were appointed by the mayor to lead a new commission, or committee rather, to find our city manager, and we did that, we did that thing, and professionally and with hours of work, but we do have our new city manager whom we are thankful for. So, that's just kind of a snapshot, and that's just been in the past two years of why I felt as though I had some degree of grounds to make that nomination, and then other folks from the community, bless their hearts, had written some letters on my behalf, which you guys are just too kind, and they did that on their own accord. So, thank you so much.
Is there any other discussion? Any other discussion, hearing none, and we will move on to the voting. Even though the second nomination did not receive a second, nomination did not receive a second, we will proceed. The first person nominated was Rosalind Moore. All those people in favor of Rosalind Moore, would you raise your hand so the clerk could count? No, but because there was one, we're going, the chair will, as ruled, that we will just vote, we'll vote anyway.
I'm sorry, can you...
Would you please raise your hand until she has finished her count? The count is seven?
Yes.
Seven zero. Okay, so Rosalind Moore then would be the second vice mayor. At this point, we will go down and have the oath of office administered by State Representative Jessica Miranda.
Alright, everybody ready? Okay, I state your name.
Denise Holt.
Do solemnly swear or affirm.
Affirm.
Do solemnly swear or affirm.
That I will support.
That I will support.
The Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the state of Ohio.
And the Constitution of the state of Ohio.
The Charter of the City of Forest Park, Ohio.
The Charter of the City of Forest Park, Ohio.
And that I will faithfully.
And I will faithfully.
Honestly.
Honestly.
And impartially.
And impartially.
Discharge the duties as.
Discharge the duties as. First vice mayor.
Congratulations.
Congratulations.
We'll move now to item number five, appointment of standing committees. This would, this requires a, basically it's a concurrence, and it requires the, a motion to concur with the appointments, the assignments of the mayor to the standing committees. Those committees would, the chairs, this would be for the chairs of those committees, and by charter, the charter requires that each council member must chair one of the standing committees, and that each council member must also serve on at least two others of the standing committees. I will read through these committees and then I'll ask for a motion. The first committee would be Economic Development, that will be chaired by Councilwoman Moore, and the members of that committee would be Johnson and Herbie. Community Development, I'm sorry. The second would be Human Resources, that would be chaired by Councilwoman Holt, and the members would be Councilman Brown and Herbie. The third committee, Intergovernmental Relations and Communications, that committee is chaired by the mayor, and the other members of that committee would be the first and second vice mayor. The next committee is the Law Committee, and that committee would be chaired by Mr. Brown with Councilman Ness and Moore. The next committee is Public Improvement and Facilities, chaired by Mr. Sylvester with Councilwoman, I'm sorry, Councilwoman Ness and Councilman Brown. The next committee is Public Safety, chaired by Councilwoman Ness with Councilman Johnson and Sylvester. The last committee is Ways and Means Committee, chaired by Councilwoman Herbie with Councilwoman Holt and Sylvester. I would like a motion to concur with the mayor's recommendation, with the mayor's appointment, Councilwoman Herbie?
I would move to concur with the mayor's appointments.
Second.
To committees, standing committees, council.
It's been moved in second that the, to concur with the appointments of the mayors to the standing committees, is there any discussion? Hearing none, I believe these are all voice votes?
Yes.
All those in favor of the concurrence, let it be known by the sign of voting aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Then the standing committees are set. Next item is item six, appointments, voting memberships, the first of those being appointments to the planning commission as voting member, the mayor would, the mayor's appointing Mr. Aaron Brown to that committee, is there a motion? Councilwoman Herbie?
I would move to concur with the appointment to the planning commission by the mayor.
Second.
Been moved in second to concur with the mayor's appointment of Mr. Aaron Brown to the planning commission, any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor of the motion, let it be known by the sign of voting aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Mr. Brown is appointed to the voting member of the planning commission. The next one is appointment to Stormwater Management, children's board. The mayor would appoint Mr. Johnson, is that, to that board? Is there a motion, Councilwoman Herbie?
Yes, I would move to concur with the mayor's appointment to the Stormwater Policy Board.
Second.
It's been moved in second that, to concur with the mayor's appointment to the Stormwater Board, is there any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor of the motion to concur, let it be known by the sign of voting aye?
Aye.
Opposed? That concurrence is given. The next item on the agenda is item number seven, other appointments. The first of those would be appointments to the Board of Investment, the mayor would appoint to that committee, the chaired Ways and Means, Councilwoman Herbie. Is there a motion to concur, Councilwoman Herbie? Yes.
Oh, I would move to concur with the mayor's appointment to the Board of Investment.
Second.
Been moved in second that, Councilwoman, that we concur with the appointment of Councilwoman Herbie to Board of Investments, is there any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor of the motion, let it be known by the sign of voting aye?
Aye.
Opposed? That appointment, that concurrence is given. Next item on the agenda is appointment to OKI Board of Trustees for the term commencing 1/9/20. The mayor would, is recommended continuous of Councilwoman Moore, is that, to serve in that capacity, is there a motion? Councilwoman Herbie?
Yes, I would move to concur with the mayor's appointment to the OKI Regional Committee of Governments.
Second.
It's been moved in second that the council would concur with the appointment of Councilwoman Moore to the OKI Board of Trustees, is there any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor of the motion, let it be known by the sign of voting aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Next item on the agenda is item C, appointment of Clerk of Council as HB9 Public Records Designee. Is there a motion, Councilwoman Herbie?
Yeah, I would move to concur with the mayor's appointment of the Clerk of Council to the House Bill 9 Public Records Designee.
Second.
Been moved in second that the appointment of the Clerk of Council to House Bill 9 Public Records be approved, is there any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor of the motion, let it be known by the sign of voting aye?
Aye.
Opposed? That appointment, that concurrence is given to that appointment. That would conclude the items on the agenda for the council organizational meeting. I would, for those of you who do not, maybe do not know, starting in about 15 minutes down New Drive to the Senior Center, we will be having the annual tree lighting ceremony. So, especially for those of you who are still young enough to enjoy that, you might want to go down and take part. Then after that, we will, the council will reconvene here at 8 o'clock for its regular, regular council meeting. I would like to thank all of you for coming, I would like to especially thank State Representative Jessica Miranda for agreeing to handle the swearing-in of our people tonight, and I would like to thank all of those people who, those new council members who chose to run and to serve the city, as well as the old, I should say, experienced council member who ran for reelection. And I would just say that it is very important that we all learn to, that we all take very seriously your involvement in your local government. We need to all understand... We need to all understand that while things in the news regarding what's going on in Washington, what's going on in Columbus are important, but the things that impact your daily life more than anything else is what happens in your community. And your community cannot be and will not be any better than we all working together can make it. Unfortunately, or fortunately, however you want to look at it, serving, serving your community i- is not a glamorous thing. It's hard work, it involves a lot of time, and I think everybody up here, maybe the two new people don't know it yet, but there's absolutely no money involved in this. I mean, you know, the, the amount of money that, we don't get paid, we get what's called a stipend to cover our expenses. And given the price of gas and all the other stuff today, that ends up to be about zero. So I applaud anybody who would take their time to do this. And more than that, not, you know, the charter limits the members of council to seven people. For many, many years, as, I'm speaking personally, I've been involved with the ci- with the city one way or another since nineteen eighty-two, mostly in that time as a volunteer on various committees and commissions. And again, that's, there's no pay involved in that, but there can be and should be satisfaction in knowing that you're doing something to help to make your community better. We want to make sure that Forest Park is clean, we want to make sure that Forest Park is safe, we want to make sure that Forest Park is doing the right things for its citizens. And we could not function, we, we can't, the city simply cannot function without volunteers. It takes people who are willing to give, and give, and give, and give. We, one of the problems that we have, quite frankly, is we tend to burn people out because that, that, that pool of volunteers is constantly getting smaller, primarily because it's getting older, and we need to replace it. I know from the standpoint of the Human Resources Committee, we almost always have vacancies on most of our commissions and committees. You know, I'm not blaming anybody, because times have changed, our lifestyles have changed. You know, it used to be that you could go to work and come home and deal with whatever you had to, or there was a time when, and don't take this the wrong way, ladies, there was a time when women actually did not work outside the home, or didn't, not as much, but they do now. And our responsibility to our children and our grandchildren and our spouses i- is greater. Add to that, you know, there, there's one of those good, bad things. We are living longer, and because we're living longer, we get into situations where we require caregiving. If you never had to do that, you have no idea how hard of a job that is. So if you happen to be one of those people, I can understand fully why you can't volunteer, because you're doing all you can do to keep your head above water. But, having said that, I would ask each and every one of you, and talk to your friends, your neighbors, your, your, your members of your church, if you can give just one hour every month to doing, to volunteering, to do something in the city, for the city, it's going to make the city better, and that in terms is going to make you, make you better. We have a very, very small police department in terms of numbers. We have a very small fire department and public safety department in terms of number. It's not possible for those people to be at all places at all the times that they need to, need to. So we need your help. You know, it's sometime, you know, people will sometimes say, well, I don't want to snitch on anybody. But when you see people throwing garbage in the street, when you see people whose cars are overhanging sidewalks, when you see people who are speeding, or people who are playing their music too loud, any number of those things, we would hope that we can rely on you to call somebody and report that. Because if it happens on your street, and I see it and I don't report it, it's probably going to happen on mine. And we need to make sure that we all have each other's back. And now, I have talked long enough, and I'm going to adjourn the meeting, and I hope to see you all down, down the walkway at the tree lighting. If there's no other business to be come before this organization meeting, I declare that we are adjourned. Called to order, City of Forest Park Council Meeting number thirteen forty-seven, December second, twenty nineteen. Let's stand for the pledge, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands.
Clerk call the roll, please.
Brown?
Present.
Herbie?
Here.
Holt?
Here.
Johnson?
Yeah.
Moore?
Here.
Nuss?
Here.
Sylvester?
Here.
The record showed that all council members are present. Next item on the agenda is the minutes, everyone should have received the minutes in your packets, are there any corrections or additions to the minutes? Hearing none, the minutes will stand approved as presented. Next item on the agenda is presentation, there are no presentations. So we will then move to item number four, communications from the public. This is the time for citizens to comment on matters before council or to ask questions or concerns to them. When recognized, please come forward to the podium, give your name and address, and then state your comments or questions. Council meetings are taped recorded for ease of transcriptions, comments are limited to five minutes. Anyone from the public to state your name, and those who you are, your name and address, and you are.
My name is Trevina Adams, I am a member of the Economic Development Commission. My address is one one four one four Odessa Court. Yes, sir, so I would like to share the idea of possibly filling the community council room with citizens in an effort to get the community involved. I am not one hundred percent sure who that conversation needs to be with. If you can direct me, I would be more than willing to follow up and have that conversation with them. But I do believe there are small things that we can do in an effort to get the community here so that they know what's going on with Forest Park in an effort to continue to build and push Forest, Forest Park forward. I do appreciate council meeting, I do appreciate council meeting on time, and I do appreciate the work that council is doing, but I think it's important that the community is involved, and I would like to see council, or whoever, those parties be, put some more effort into getting the community here.
Okay, thank you. I will make sure that, well, the city manager and I will undertake, will make, decide on which is the best direction to go, to get to, to reach our goal.
Thank you, Mayor, and I do trust that.
Thank you. Anyone else from the public? Mr. Smith?
Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Moving to item number five, report of standing committees. The first of these would be the Law Committee, Councilman Brown.
There's nothing to report at the time, and no work items.
Okay, any questions for Councilman Brown? Hearing none, Councilman Brown, for the work session on the ninth, I don't have any agendas listed for you on the work session, do you have any to add at this time?
No, sir.
Thank you. Next committee report is Human Resources Committee, Councilwoman Holt.
I do not have a report tonight on the Human Resources Committee. However, I would like to let, let all of the citizens know that the holiday decoration contest judging, judging will be held on Wednesday, December eighteenth. I would like to see every house in Forest Park with the lights, let's light up the city this year. That would conclude my report, thank you.
Thank you, Councilwoman Holt. Any questions for Councilwoman Holt? Hearing none, Councilwoman, I have one item on the agenda for you for the work session, amending chapter thirty-four. This is regarding the employees' fringe benefit package, do you have anything to add?
No, I do not, thank you.
Next committee report is Public Improvement and Facilities, Councilman Sylvester.
I don't have any report for the Public Improvements and Facilities Committee yet this time.
Yeah. Any questions for Councilman Sylvester? Hearing none, Councilman Sylvester, there are no items on the agenda listed for you at this time for the meeting on the ninth. Next report is Public Safety Committee, Councilwoman Nuss.
Yes, I do have a report. Last month, we met as Public Safety, Chief Arnz, Assistant Chief was there of the, the Police Department, as well as Assistant Chief Jermaine Hill, and, and, oh goodness. Thank you. Chief Johnson over at the Fire Department, Alfie. We had a very good meeting, it was a follow-up, so to speak. We discussed getting some in, information and details concerning the Police Department, and, you know, things like transitioning, once we hire individuals, what that transition looks like for our community so that they are of good fit, of course, and kind of, of course, and kind of get acclimated as best they can. We'll be awaiting for a few more details on that point. We also found out that they are getting ready to launch their junior police academy, which will come out in, I believe, spring of twenty twenty, not exactly sure of the month, they're working on that. I think that's going to be an excellent program for our young people, both female and males alike. They'll have the opportunity to experience what it's like on a daily basis with our officers, and hopefully get them, you know, kind of bridge, bridge those connections, and so we're excited about that. Also, we talked about the Neighborhood Block Party that we had, this was the first one in twenty-four years in the city of Forest Park. That was the, the one that I had aforementioned, myself and Kathy Gray worked on. We talked about that, and also what our plans were in moving forward, and, you know, getting some things in place so that we can begin to launch that in the, for the summer. We don't do anything in the cold months. Outside of that, that would conclude my report. The last thing that I have is just an update from, that I wanted to share, if, Mayor, if you permit, that I'd like to share with council as well as, as our residents concerning EDC, and a letter that I wrote in October.
Okay.
Okay, thank you. This letter was dated October twenty-third. I am the vice chair of the Economic Development Commission, I think it's a wonderful commission. Our job is making sure that we provide resources for companies that are wanting to be, to make home, or to make Forest Park their home, and/or especially trying to retain those companies, and how we can devise incentive packages, primarily economic in nature, so that we can have that achieved. After being on the commission for some time, there are a couple of things that notice, it's a great commission, but there's always room for improvement. So this letter, to give you some basis, is where that came from. My fellow council members have this as well. Fellow commissioners, I've had the privilege of being a commissioner on Economic Development Commission for over two years, and I have noticed some good procurement and retainment strategies here in our city, but I've also seen areas which need some improvement. It is important to understand Forest Park's demographic in terms of its business community, as well as residential. We currently have just over sixty-three percent African-American residents, and a reasonable number of Africans, Hispanics, and a growing Middle Eastern population. However, our business community is more than ninety percent Caucasian. This does put Forest Park in a unique predicament. I have yet to see any tangible engaging or concerted efforts from our chamber or commission in designing, proposing, or implementing minority and women-owned business efforts. As a result, I will be establishing a subcommittee entitled the Minority Community Business Initiative in order to promote and encourage access and equity to city contracts, pathways for youth to careers, business training, and ultimately providing economic opportunity and incentives to small, minority-owned, women-owned, and disadvantaged business owners. With guidance from the Cincinnati Chapter of the African-American Chamber of Commerce, I'm sorry, African-American Chamber, and support from this commission and Cincinnati's Rec Department, we'll be able to tap into existing resources that have historically not reached our community of eligible entrepreneurs. The outcomes of our focus areas are the source for creating a tangible return on investment in this very community. I also believe it to be imperative to listen to the needs of our community and minority entrepreneurs. While this listening can be achieved in many different ways, I'm inclined to create an electronic and hard copy survey, and host a vision and listening community session to gather input. Just as we incentivize mid to large businesses in our city, we must also extend it to minority and disadvantaged businesses. This initiative will help Forest Park navigate its identity, its vision, and solidify our commitment to inclusion and diversity. I look forward to sharing information for a more rich and vibrant Forest Park. With the submission of that letter, the initiative was launched, and at our last meeting, Hamilton County Economic Inclusion Director Robert Bell, his initiative is building opportunities by leveraging diversity. He did come to talk to our commission, and it was a phenomenal talk, so please stay tuned. And we also are looking for folks in the community that are specific entrepreneurs, entrepreneurs, if they'd like to be a part of this committee and help us get this work achieved, thank you.
Any questions for Councilwoman Nuss? Hearing none, Councilwoman Nuss, there are no items on the agenda for you for the ninth, do you have any to add?
I do not, sir, thank you.
Next committee report is Ways and Means Committee, Councilwoman Herbie.
Yes, as a liaison to the Economic Development Commission, I wanted to share with you a couple other initiatives. The Economic Development Commission is, is doing a strategic plan, which really kind of falls in line with the comments that council member, former council member Burns was talking about in terms of where we need to go over the next several years. And they, it is, it is a six-point plan, first of all, conducting research, I'm not going to define each one of these, engaging the stakeholders, completing corridor analysis, which we're starting to do now, complete a draft of the plan and schedule for its implementation, measure results, and then refine and retool the strategic plan. The other is, we have a lot of challenges in our retail corridors, and frankly, we've been talking about this for quite some time, that retail is really going to have to probably be redeveloped and repositioned as different, for different use. And so one of the initiatives is also a revitalization initiative primarily focused on retail properties to bring them to their highest potential use. And so I wanted to share that economic development is also looking at those two things, too.
Questions for Councilwoman Herbie? Hearing none, Councilwoman Herbie, I have no items on the, well, I have four items on the agenda for the work session. First one is salary resolution, second one is the fee ordinance, third one is the twenty twenty budget, and the fourth one is final twenty nineteen appropriations, do you have anything to add?
Sir.
Next report is Community Development, Councilwoman Moore.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, I do not have a report at this time, as this is a new committee for me.
Okay, do you have any in there?
Yes, I just want to thank the staff in the community for coming out for the tree lighting ceremony today, it was a great turnout. Also, I want to invite the residents for Breakfast with Santa, and so that is December the seventh, from ten a.m. to twelve noon, and that's at the Frishe's on Chase Plaza. And so we welcome everyone to come out, there's prizes, there's crafts, and so please make sure that you're able to attend. Thank you, that completes my report.
Any questions for Councilwoman Moore? Hearing none, Councilwoman Moore, I have one item on the agenda for you for the ninth, it's Special Assessment at eleven four twenty-six Carey Lane, do you have any others to add?
I do not.
Thank you. Next committee report is General Governmental Relations and Communication, that is my committee, I have no report at this time. Move to item number six, the mayor's report. I would just like to report, obviously, again, to add to, thank you to the Parks and Parks Department for the tree lighting that just took place just a little while ago down at the Senior Center. And also to, again, urge all of our citizens, where possible, to participate And also to, again, urge all of our citizens, where possible, to participate and to light up Forest Park for the holidays. That will conclude my report. I'll answer any questions if there are any. Hearing none, item number seven, city manager to report, Mr. Jones.
Thank you. Our department had meeting, our department reports were filed as, as required and they're available for review and have any questions, I'd be glad to answer them. The, would like to point out that it is getting that time of year where the, particularly this evening, we might have some snow and some, some ice and therefore, and things like that. So everybody be careful on the roads, but we do have a plan. We've gone through it with our Public Works Department and pay attention to, want to direct everybody to our website and take a look at our, and also, and I believe we put it in the progress last week with the, in the newsletter, with regards to how you should park and how you should manage when there's, you know, a lot of snow and snow emergencies. So if you have any questions, give us a call with Public Works and we'll be glad to talk to you about it. The main, the bottom line is try and get off the street if there's a lot of snow. That way you can be assured that, that your, that your streets get fully scraped and just keep an eye out for it and keep an eye on each other, so. Other than that, I'd be glad to answer any questions.
Any questions for our city manager? Hearing none, thank you, sir. Next item on the agenda is item eight of the reports, first of those being the Law Director, Mr. Wyckoff.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. This evening I do not have a report, but would be happy to answer any questions.
Any questions for Law Director? Hearing none, thank you, sir. Next report is Clerk of Council, S. Boyd.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'd like to report that ordinance numbers 27-2019 and 28-2019 and resolution numbers 40-2019 through 43-2019 were posted as required, and that concludes my report.
Okay, next item on the agenda is, any questions for the Clerk of Council? Hearing none, next item on the agenda is item nine, new business, Councilwoman Herbie.
I would move to suspend the rules requiring the reading in full on two separate days and read by title only, ordinances number 29-2019 and 30-2019.
Second.
And move to second that we suspend the rules requiring the reading in full on two separate days and read by title only, ordinance number 29 and 30, 2019. Is there any discussion?
Just for the benefit of our new council members and also for the public, we can make this motion when the ordinances have been posted prior to the meeting for six days, which was done, and that saves us time from having to read the whole ordinance, so I would urge adoption of this motion.
Any further discussion? Hearing none, would the clerk please call the roll on the motion to suspend?
Herbie?
Yes.
Holt?
Yes.
Johnson?
Yes.
Moore?
Yes.
Ness?
Yes.
Sylvester?
Yes.
Brown? Yes.
Motion to suspend passed at 7-0. First item is item A, ordinance 29-2019. Would the clerk please read this ordinance by title only?
Ordinance number 29-2019, an ordinance to adopt a plan of operation and govern, governance for natural gas governmental aggregation and declaring an emergency.
Councilwoman Herbie?
I would move ordinance number 29-2019.
Second.
Another motion. You've got to get it on the floor.
Wait, no, 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 just wait. John?
Oh, we've got a second, so now we would discuss the ordinance itself and during that discussion, a motion could be postponed.
Okay, is, we've, it's been moved in second to adopt ordinance 2019. Is there a discussion? Councilwoman Herbie?
Yes, I'd like to move to postpone this to a time certain to the next council meeting on the 16th.
Is there a second? It's been moved in second that we postpone this ordinance, action on this ordinance to time certain, that be December 16th. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, would the clerk call the roll on the motion to suspend?
To postpone.
To postpone, sorry.
Holt?
Yes.
Johnson?
Yes.
Moore?
Yes.
Ness?
Yes.
Sylvester?
Yes.
Brown?
Yes.
Herbie?
Yes.
Motion to suspend ordinance 29-2019 until December 16th passed at 7-0. Next item on the agenda is item B, ordinance 30-2019. The clerk please read this ordinance by title only.
Ordinance number 30-2019, an ordinance to adopt a plan of operation and governance for electric governmental aggregation and declaring an emergency.
Is there a motion, Councilwoman Herbie?
Yes, I would move to adopt ordinance number 30-2019.
Second.
And move to second that we adopt ordinance 30-2019. Is there any discussion?
Yes, I would move also to postpone this to a time certain until the next council meeting, December 16th.
It's been moved in second that we postpone ordinance 30-2019 to time certain, December 16th. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, would the clerk please call the roll on the motion to postpone?
Johnson?
Yes.
Moore?
Yes.
Ness?
Yes.
Sylvester?
Yes.
Brown?
Yes.
Herbie?
Yes.
Holt?
Yes.
The motion to postpone passed at 7-0. Next item on the agenda, is there a motion, Councilwoman Herbie?
Yes, I would move to suspend the rules requiring the reading in full and read resolution number 45-2019 by title only.
Second.
It's been moved in second that we suspend the rules requiring the reading in full and read resolution 45-2019 by title only. Is there discussion?
Uh, no.
Hearing none, would the clerk please call the roll on the motion to suspend the rules?
Moore?
Yes.
Ness?
Yes.
Sylvester?
Yes.
Brown?
Yes.
Herbie?
Yes.
Holt?
Yes.
Johnson?
Yes.
Motion to suspend the rules passed at 7-0. Move to item C, would the clerk please read resolution 45-2019 by title only?
Resolution number 45-2019, solid waste and recycling collection service fee increases for the city of Forest Park, Ohio for the period of January 1st, 2020 through December 31st, 2020.
Is there a motion, Councilwoman Herbie?
Um, yes, I would move passage of resolution number 45-2019.
Is there a second?
Second.
It's been moved in second that we adopt resolution 45-2019. Is there a discussion? Councilwoman Herbie?
Uh, after about 10 years, we are compelled to make a slight increase in solid waste and recycling collection fees. And we're doing this in some stages and this, I think, is a second stage, so I would urge adoption of this resolution.
Any further discussion? Hearing none, would the clerk please?
Are we allowed to have a question about that?
Not at this time, generally.
Or the history there of it?
John?
That, that would be up to you as chair. I mean, the, the public portion of the agenda has already gone past.
But was this, but now that we're getting into this, why are you questioning?
Uh, generally speaking, all the participation of the public is limited to the, to the public portion of the agenda. What I will do at this time, if you have a specific question, I will allow you to ask a question.
What is the fee?
I don't have it in front of me, unfortunately. I think it's.
Eighteen dollars, fifty cents?
Well, that's not the increase.
What is the increase?
I think the increase for this portion is fifty cents.
It was fifty cents?
Thank you.
Month.
Per month, per month.
And who's that payable to?
It's payable to, you'll be paid on your water bills.
Yeah.
And so it'll be paid to the, I guess, Cincinnati Water Works, but it comes to the city of Forest Park.
It comes to us and we forward it to.
We don't keep it.
How is this communicated to the residents?
It, was it any progress?
Yeah.
I think it was in the progress report newsletter. That's the only communication vehicle we have at this time. It's on.
Hold, just wait. This is not a new program. This has been ongoing for, no, no, this is part of my explanation answering your question. We started doing this probably in 2008, I believe. There has been no increase in the fees since then. Now, we, it's been determined that there needs to be an increase and that increase is 50 cent. Now, in terms of communications to the public, every year, I believe it's been every year, there's been an update on this, this particular service. So when, whenever you moved into the city with, it was doing waste collection, this was, this is, this is the service that was provided. So this is where, why we are where we are now. So it's not that this is, first of all, it's not something we're just starting. Secondly, it's not something that has not been continuously, continued over since 2008, meaning 11 years. So we're now at the point where the council is going to determine whether or not we're going to vote on this resolution for this 50 cent increase.
What factors are taken into consideration?
I'm sorry, but I gave you one question that, you know, we, we have to move on with this. We're voting on it now. I'm sorry that you weren't here when we, at the time that we started this, but what I will do is if you will give to the city manager your contact information or if you will contact him, I think Wright is still out, right?
Wright's still out.
Uh, they would be at that point better, better equipped, you know, they, they will be able to provide you with definitive information that you, that you, yeah.
Fee and.
All of it.
Support, one of the methods of communication.
They will answer all of your, they will answer all your questions when you contact them.
And I will add this, Mr. Mayor, but the, we actually absorbed a portion of that fee within this past decade, so that was kind of a, that's a good, that's a little good star for Forest Park. We did absorb it because they needed it to go up and we said, mm-mm, we'll, we'll, we'll eat it so that our residents have, have this service, and so we did that. Unfortunately, we can't keep doing it. So that's where we are.
I'm sorry, I, I, but, but, I'm sorry, but we're going to have to limit your discussion at this time because we have to move on. Please. Call the city manager's office, get your answers. All right. So at this point, we would ask the clerk to call the roll on the resolution.
Ness?
Yes.
Sylvester?
Yes.
Brown?
Yes.
Herbie?
Yes.
Holt?
Yes.
Johnson?
Yes.
Moore?
No.
The resolution passed at 6-0. Is there any other business to come before the body?
Six one.
Six to one. Six to one. Is there any further business to come before the body? Any further business to come before the body? Hearing none, the meeting is adjourned.